Okay, with the Board of Trustees for the Pasadena Area Community College District come to order. It is 5:00 and we will be moving into a closed session. But Mary, will you call the roll, please?
Dr. Fellow.
Here.
Ms. Brown.
Ms. Wa.
Here.
Dr. Mann. Mr. Martin.
Here.
Dr. Selvage.
Here.
Mr. Thompson. Mr. Lewis.
And Ms. Cooper, you want to tell us what's going to go on in closed session?
Certainly. The first item is collective bargaining with PCCFA, lead negotiator Mr. Bruce Barsuk, pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-7.6. Next is collective bargaining with our three classified units, CSEA, CFT, and POA, lead negotiator myself, Government Code Section 5495-7.6. Next, we have public employee appointments, chemistry instructor, simulation and skills lab coordinator, teacher specialist disabilities, psychology instructor, counseling psychologist, counselor, automotive technology instructor, counselor noncredit, and English instructor pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-7. Next is public employee appointment, associate vice president, strategic planning and innovation, associate vice president, student affairs, and associate vice president, academic affairs, pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-7. Next is public employee appointment, manager information technology support services and manager academic services, again Government Code Section 5495-7. And last is conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, one matter pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9B.
Thank you very much. We are going to closed session now. Well, the Board of Trustees of the Pasadena Area Community College District come to order for April 30th, just a minute, for June 25th, 2014. And, we have a report from closed session. Yeah. Have the attorney give the report from closed session.
There was no reportable action in closed session. President Fellow.
Thank you very much. Ms. Wa, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Stand. Place your hand over your heart. Follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Wa. Before we begin this evening, I must report that trustee Bill Thompson and trustee Dr. Janet Mann are both participating by telephone in tonight's meeting, and both trustees are out of the district today. And coincidentally, both of them are away providing important support and assistance to their grandchildren. Neither of them were able to anticipate the need to participate in the open session by phone until the agenda was posted. Therefore, I want to announce their locations for the record. Trustee Thompson is in Lewisburg, Pennsylvania, at the Country Inn and Suites, 134 Walter Drive. And he has a copy of our agenda as in a place open to the public. Trustee Mann is in San Diego, California, at the Patio Starbucks at 10406A Mission George Boulevard. And I hope you're having the new Oprah Winfrey tri-tea. It's very good. She too has a copy of our agenda and is in a place open to the public. Thank you very much. Okay, introductions and recognitions. Dr. Rocha.
Yes, thank you, President Fellow. First, it gives me great pleasure to answer the phone. Okay. There we go. We have the co-chair of the President's Latino Advisory Committee, Roberta Martinez, and some other members of the committee here. And Roberta, I invite you up to the podium to give the board your report of the great work that you've done this year.
There are two computers here, so forgive me for looking a little awkward while I'm reading to you. Good evening, Board members, President Rocha, faculty and staff. My name is Roberta Martinez, and I have the distinct pleasure to serve as co-chair for the President's Latino Advisory Committee here at PCC. Committee members meet monthly and come from the local community, staff and administrators at PCC. PlAC, as it was, as the group is known, was established in 1999. We've just completed our 15th year, and the work that is being done remains committed to the group's mission, that being to enhance the educational success of Latino students at PCC. This past year has been focused on reviewing and strengthening the infrastructure practices and protocol for PlAC. The academic year began with an updated overview of the California Community Colleges, given by Jack Scott, 14th Chancellor of the California Community Colleges System. The information shared helped us, as we discussed, excuse me, shared our questions, opinions, and suggestions to items that were as varied as the pathway program being available to students in PUSD and the various initiatives on campus. Some focused on providing the programs and tools that will enhance the success of Latino students at PCC. You have in front of you two documents. The first is an elaboration of the points that I've mentioned, and the second is an acknowledgement of the work that is taking place at the Rosemead site. As I conclude my comments, I need to be sure to mention that much of what we have been able to accomplish this past year has been because of the consistent support and responsiveness of Dr. Mark Rocha and Dr. Cynthia Olivo. We've been kept abreast of items that would have significant impact on students and the campus. The administration's willingness to respond to any given topic has resulted in increased participation from community members and college staff. It should be noted that the addition of administrative assistant Marina Jimenez has allowed PlAC to do its work more effectively, having minutes as well as staff that one can count on for follow-through. That has allowed us to function more efficiently. Overall, PlAC's active participation and input has played a positive and vital role here at PCC. We look forward to continuing to do so in the coming academic year, and we remain committed to our mission, which is to help enhance the educational success of Latino students at PCC. And I want to acknowledge a couple of PlAC members that are here tonight, Stella Morga and Hank Guerrero. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Roberta. Thank you.
And next, we'd like to honor Simon Fraser, who has been the student trustee for 2013-2014. And Simon, come on up.
It's been a pleasure to serve with you this year as student trustee. You're very bright and happy. Hopefully you're in a way of a greater thing. On behalf of the trustee that I've been here with this memorable picture, if you would like, there I am. Congratulations. Thank you for your work with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, members of the Board of Trustees. I've had now a four-year student leadership career at Pasadena City College, and so I just want to thank, you know, very briefly, a couple of people. I think I want to mention Jamie Hammond. I hope you all remember her. She was the AS president 2010-11. And she was the one who caught me in front of the Mirapool steps at my first, witnessing my very first student rally. I was thinking, I have no idea what was going on. And she was the one who encouraged me to get involved. And it's been with the support of this Board of Trustees in the last year that I've been able to thrive and succeed, even through challenging times, when things have been difficult. But I'm greatly appreciative for your support, and I look forward to the things that the Pasadena Area Community College District will do in the near future. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Simon.
President Fellow, I just wanted to also say that this was, this last weekend, Simon and I attended the California Community College Trustees Board Meeting, and it was also his last meeting with the trustees. And all of the trustees acknowledged what great contributions Simon had made to the discussions and deliberations that were being, that were before the Board, and asked if there was a way that he could still stay on even if he wasn't a student trustee.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And now we'll go to the, our next recognition.
Yes. President Fellow, the district is a member and an institutional supporter of the American Association of University Women. And today, we have the representatives of Glendale, AAUW, and I think Susan Streeter, if she's here, if she could come forward, and Ariana Duffy, and Mary Jo Brown, if they are with us going once.
Oh, good.
Ah, there we go. And the liaison, the college's liaison to the AAUW is Dr. Cynthia Olivo.
Great. Hello, everyone. I just wanted to acknowledge the support of the AAUW of our students here at PCC. And this is one such student who benefited from the support of the American Association of University Women. And Ariana will tell you about her trip to Washington, DC.
Hi, all. Thank you for having me and giving me recognition. So I was able to go to Washington, DC, as well as Maryland, and stay on Maryland's campus for a total of four days with 1,000 other women from all over the world. And I was able to go to, I think it was about seven workshops, and I was also able to go visit the Capitol and have a walk-through and meet some of the senators. And it was amazing. I learned so much that was so valuable to me that I wish I would have gone before. And I wish that other people from this school had the opportunity to go, because I feel that it is very beneficial, and it helps me speak in front of platforms such as this, and it will help me in my future endeavors. So I really do appreciate being picked to go to this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Good, thank you.
Dr. Mann and I are both members of the AAUW. And when Ariana was selected on Dr. Olivo's recommendation, she went to the luncheon and was introduced to the chapter. And all of the members wrote back, and they emailed and just said how impressed they were, and they just thought she was really a stellar leader model. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wa. Now we will turn to public comments on non-agenda items. Ms. Wa.
Yes, I have five comments. I'm going to read three names, and so please line up. You'll each have three minutes to speak. I'll press the button. The yellow button will come on to warn you that you only have one more minute left. Okay, so Patricia Rose, Dan Haley, and Eduardo Cairo. Patricia Rose.
We would like to read a letter to you. This is from the Academic Senate Executive Committee. Nothing, I will say nothing, is going to impede a perfect accreditation report under my leadership, reported President Fellowes in his first address to Pasadena City College at the Board of Trustees meeting on December 18th, 2013. Dr. Fellowes also reported that accreditation is important for the reputation of our college and for the success of our students. We, the Executive Committee of the Academic Senate, couldn't agree more, which is why we and the shared governance groups on campus must work together to ensure that PCC meets successfully the established accreditation standards. For other community colleges, the ACCJC has cited failure to remedy issues identified in previous recommendations as a reason for the imposition of sanctions. In PCC's three previous accreditation cycles, the ACCJC cited the college for problems concerning shared governance and integrated planning. A campus climate survey conducted by Modern Think in March 2014 and referred to by President Rocha on 24 February 2014 as, quote, "required" of our accreditation self-study indicates a lot of work needs to be done and done soon to restore collegiality. Discussions in the Academic Senate Town Halls this past year, as well as the Town Hall Climate Survey, mirror these results. In other words, shared governance needs to be honored, and the administration needs to adhere to PCC policies. Other problems need to be addressed as well. At the Managers' Meeting the first week of June, the administration announced that PCC is not meeting its FTEs targets and that PCC has lost $3 million. What's more, the continued lack of integrated planning and scheduling and enrollment management is aggravating the statewide trend of lowered enrollments. We have requested from IPRO and Academic Affairs a statistical breakdown of cancel classes due to low enrollment for the past years, and we would like to be part of the conversation to see what can be done to remedy this serious trend. A certain number of cancellations are usual, but it's unconscionable, not to mention financially unsound, to make decisions to open courses, staff them, and then cancel them, wrecking havoc on both faculty and students, putting further in jeopardy the reputation of PCC.
Good evening. I'm Dan Haley. I'm the treasurer of the Academic Senate. I'll continue the letter. The canceling of more than half of the classes at the Rosemead campus for summer session one is another indication that management of our academic programs is misdirected. Out of the 93 classes initially offered as of 14 June, 53 have been canceled. Furthermore, while PCC opened the Rosemead facility in an effort to regain enrollments, F1 students taking classes there have had to be dropped because the college apparently had not properly completed state documents. If this is the case, it is our hope that the Board is aware of this oversight and is holding the administration accountable. The planning process at PCC is ineffective, and the cost of maintaining the Rosemead facility should be reconsidered. The loss of FTES has been a problem since the Board of Trustees canceled winter intercession. Every local community college has maintained a winter intercession, Santa Monica, Glendale, Mount San Antonio, El Camino, and Santa Clara, not to mention the LA Community College District. Our calendar is neither aligned with these colleges, nor are our spring semester and summer session one aligned with any local high school or CSU. As of today, our school hasn't even published the start date for the next academic year. How many students has PCC failed to track and will continue doing so because of the district's refusal to publish a calendar in a timely manner? PCC has lost the most FTES transfer students out of five similarly sized colleges in our local area, Mount SAC, Long Beach, Glendale, Santa Monica, and El Camino, over 4,800 since 2009. Students want the winter session restored. The fact that many programs on campus rely on winter for student completion and that its cancellation has impeded the transfer of our students make this a 10-plus-one issue. Yet the Board refused to include the shared governance calendar on its agenda at 14 May and didn't allow discussion of the calendar at the technical visits citing unfair labor suit and collective bargaining as the reason. As a result of the lost opportunity to take units in winter without any mutual agreement from the Academic Senate, the administration now allows students to take up 19 units in the summer, enabling them to overload their units in one session. Doubling of units that students can now take in a compressed semester will no doubt negatively affect students' success rates. The Board of Trustees needs to reinstate the winter intercession in January 2015 regardless of the unfair labor ruling. Once again, students will be able to use winter session classes for fall transfers. Students won't be tempted to overload on units during summer session, and our calendar will align with local high schools and colleges.
Ms. Michelson, after Mr. Cairo.
Good evening, Board. I'm Eduardo Cairo, President of Academic Senate, and I will finish off the letter. We understand that the administration plans to continue its extensive building program at the college, and a bond from the local taxpayers to fund this program will be necessary. But why would Pasadena taxpayer trust the Board of Trustees, stewards of the taxpayers' funding, which approves and monitors the district's expenditures, and vote for another bond in light of the poor administrative planning and singular loss of FTEs? We are also concerned that recent unfavorable news items about PCC's management in local papers will continue to erode the public's trust. A strong accreditation is necessary for PCC's continued reputation as a top community college. We believe that the above-mentioned issues can be resolved through open communication and mutual agreement. As listed in Board Bylaw 1610 Powers and Duties, the Board should recognize employee, organizations in strife or open lines of communication between Board, administration, faculty, staff, and students. Likewise, we recognize that according to the same Board Bylaw, that the Board participate in and certify that there has been broad participation by the campus committee for accreditation, self-studies, and mid-year reports. The Academic Senate Executive Committee welcomed trustees' fellows, Brown and Waugh's pledge at the 18th December 2013 Board of Trustees meeting to meet informally every other month with representatives of shared governance, and we have been anticipating invitation to meet with the Board. However, because of the imminence of accreditation and the continued issues with integrated planning and shared governance, at least, well, excuse me, at your earliest convenience, we propose joint monthly meetings with the Board members for the sake of our students and the future of our college. We will continue to keep the faculty informed of any progress as soon as we have met. Sincerely, the Academic Senate Executive Committee. Thank you.
Ms. Michelson.
My name is Melissa Michelson, and I'm here in my capacity as the Chair of the Senate Town Hall Committee. A few weeks ago, I emailed each Board member the materials from the April 8th, 2014 Faculty Staff Town Hall, to which you and the President, and President Rocha were invited but chose not to attend or participate. I am here on behalf of the Senate to deliver the hard copies of some of the materials from the Senate's Town Hall, whose theme was campus climate. In each packet, we've included faculty-staff survey results and suggestions for constructive solutions, a summary of the Town Hall video, a comparison of the 2010 Campus Climate Survey and 2014 Town Hall Campus Survey, details on three problematic and recurring themes. One, established policies and procedures that are not being followed. 71% of those polled agree with that statement. Lack of mutual agreement. And, two, lack of mutual agreement with Academic Senate and collegial consultation. 64% agree with that statement. Three, the administration is not operating with transparency. 79% agree with that statement. Personally of interest to me in this packet is the comparison of the 2010 climate, of the 2010 climate to the climate that exists today. The questions used in both surveys were the same. For example, in 2010, 49% agreed with the statement, "A sense of team spirit exists at PCC," whereas only 17% agreed today. And 68% disagreed with that. In 2010, for example, 48% of those surveyed agreed that the college operated efficiently, but nowadays, only 13% agree, and 68% disagree that the college operates efficiently. In 2010, 60% agreed that most of the time, it was safe to say what they thought, but today, only 18% believe it is safe, and 65% do not believe it is safe. These materials, as well as the video of the Town Hall, are on the Academic Senate's website. If you have any questions or would like to meet to discuss the Town Hall and/or accompanying campus climate materials, please let me know. Finally, I hope that the Board publishes the results of the Modern Think Campus Climate Survey that was done by the administration. I've heard that this is the worst in a long time, and that the Board releases this information as soon as possible, that is, it is the taxpayers' interest, voters' interest, as well as accreditation's. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wa. Now we will turn to approval of minutes. And I believe, Ms. Cooper, do these all have to be roll call votes?
Yes.
We have, I also put my name down for other issues under public comment, if you can care to check.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
President Fellow.
Yes, it is on a different topic.
Point of order, President Fellow.
Please, we, you have, if you're getting up to speak and you don't have a card, I cannot acknowledge you.
He gave two cards on public comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
President Fellow, point of order. The three minutes that are allocated to speakers are allocated to each speaker, not per each card. Mr. Cairo's been afforded his three minutes.
Yes. If you can do a minute or so.
Absolutely.
Because we have a long agenda, and we have, some trustees have to get out of here tonight.
Cut me off in two minutes. Thank you. We find ourselves this evening at a crossroad. President Superintendent may or may not leave Pasadena City College in the near future. The college cannot sustain the weight of his leadership much longer. I say this not out of malice, but rather from the history of his actions, as well as his recommendations to the Board of Trustees. As President Trustee Fellow has stated many times, Dr. Rocha does not make the decision, the Board does. This is absolutely true. However, the Board does receive guidance from the President Superintendent, and his recommendations were implemented. Here are a few consequences of the Board's decision to follow its guidance. A disastrous 2014 summer session regards enrollment, violation of Hiring Policy 6100, a decrease in FTEs, probably the lowest employee morale that this campus has ever experienced in its existence, employee fear of reprisal by administration, absolute trampling of shared governance, the very likelihood of a very poor accreditation report, a memo by Dr. Rocha verbally assaulting our college, a rise in lawsuits and legal fees, an erosion of institutional memory, three votes of no confidence against the President Superintendent, and a soon-to-be made public PCC-sponsored campus climate survey, which I am sure will reveal the abysmal environment that exists on this campus as a result of this Board's decision to follow the Superintendent's President recommendation. The bottom line is that if we are to weigh the benefits that he brings to this campus against his faults, I am sure that the scale would greatly tip in favor of his faults. How much longer can we, you, us, allow the college to sink? I'm here to address, I'm here to ask you that you no longer accept the recommendations of the President and begin to accept the recommendations of the faculty, staff, and all employees on campus. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to approval of minutes. Indeed, first is the special meeting for April 30th, 2014, the wishes of the trustees.
Move approval.
We have a motion from Mr. Martin and a second from Ms. Dr. Mann. Any discussion? All in favors? Do we have to do this by roll call?
Yeah, she, because you have two members appearing by telephone, you should poll for the votes.
Okay, Mary.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
Couldn't they just raise their hands, and you could record?
Is that what you want me to do?
Yeah, I think we have.
Dr. Fellow.
Yes.
Ms. Brown. Ms. Wa.
Yes.
Dr. Mann.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Dr. Selvage.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Do we have a unanimous vote? The second approval must be for the regular business meeting for May 14th, 2014, the wishes of the trustees.
Move approval.
We have a motion from Mr. Martin. I will second that motion. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Brown. Ms. Wa.
Abstain.
Dr. Mann.
Abstain.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Dr. Selvage.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
So four yes and two abstentions and one is not here. The next is the special meeting for June 12th, 2014, the wishes of the trustees.
Move to approve.
A motion from Ms. Wa. I will second that motion for the discussion. Ms. Thompson.
Dr. Fellow.
Yes.
Ms. Brown. Ms. Wa.
Yes.
Dr. Mann.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Dr. Selvage.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
So we have six affirmative and one absent today. Thank you. We now have the approval of the consent calendar. And before you, 171B and 172B in the folders, there has been, there was a clerical error, and there's been changes. And you have a brief memo in front of you to deal with that. Do any trustees want anything polled today?
I would like to have J107P polled, and I'd like to comment on J105P.
Let's start with 107. Yes, Dr. Mann?
Okay, give me, give me a second. I didn't know we were going to start with it. J10, give me a second. It has to do with the extension of the contract for Valerie Wardlaw. And it is my understanding that Ms. Wardlaw was appointed interim Director of Public Affairs in July 2013, and this extension through June would exceed the 18 months that is possible to extend a acting or interim position. So I would like to recommend or move that instead of extending it to June 30th, we extend it to December 30th. That would fill the 18 months. And if, in the meantime, there should be a search, this will in no way affect anyone's ability to compete. I think we should, but I think we need to follow our policy of a maximum of 18 months for interim and acting positions.
Okay, thank you. Any comments? Number 105C, I think that's.
105, 105C, I just wanted to put out, point out that we have two long-term employees retiring, Philip Young, who's been in structure and career and technical ed for 33 years, and Dr. Ted Young, who's been the Division Dean of Languages for 11 years.
Okay, thank you. Do any of the directors or trustees have any problems with these two amendments? Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
We have a motion from Ms. Wa.
Second.
And a second from Mr. Martin. Any discussion? All in favor? Mary, please, call the roll.
Dr. Fellow.
Yes.
Ms. Brown. Ms. Wa.
Yes.
Dr. Mann.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Dr. Selvage.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Okay, we have. Okay, we have six yes and one absent. We will now turn to our action items today. And the first is the adoption of the 2014-2015 academic calendar. And this evening, we're going to have two presentations, one the administrative recommendation and one the shared governance recommendation. Before we do that, we do have a number of people who want to speak. We have a 30-minute period for comments, so we have about 15 speakers. So it will only be two minutes per comment. Ms. Waugh?
So I'll call three up at a time. Please line up. Carol Robinson, Thomas Snyder, and Pat Rose.
And again, if somebody, we don't really need people to repeat things. If somebody has said something, you might want to reserve time for, can you please listen? You can reserve time for others to speak on other issues dealing with that. Go ahead.
So I think, just, just for the speaker's sake, she's asking me to time this and give you a one-minute notice and a two-minute notice, so.
Okay. We have two minutes.
I'm going to do my best on that.
You have two minutes for each speaker.
All right. I'm Carol Robinson, classified senate president. I'm here tonight to make a correction to the June 25th Board Report. Under the Board presentation, under Frequently Asked Questions, Action Item F, says, "What were the constituent group votes on the calendar which include winter?" And you have underclassified that they voted no. And this is not the correct information. No person on this campus asked me, asked for classified information regarding this question that was updated. We sent out an online survey, May 14th, to gather votes. And the online survey was only online a little over 24 hours. Dr. Rocha sent me an email that the survey that I sent out was unethical if I didn't seek and receive consent of the classified senate to send it. I looked through the bylaws and the Constitution before the, the, the vote was asked for, and it had nothing in there that it had to be consented by the classified senate officers.
One minute.
And he asked me to recall the vote and explain that I was sending it out as an individual and not the classified senate. So what I want you to do is to consider that the faculty, associated students, and the classified voted yes on the calendar, which includes winter. We had 100 responses within 24 hours and 60% voted yes to include winter in the classified senate. So I'm asking you to please change the no underclassified to yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving us the time to speak. My name is Tom Niedecker. I'm the program director for the dental hygiene program here at Pasadena City College. And when the winter was gone, there was some adverse effects in our program that we are still trying to address. And I'll try not to get emotional, but I doubt that's possible. Anyway, the effect, the initial effect of the changed schedule was that our student success rates are poor. Our national board scores are lower than they have been since I can remember. This is the initial effect. This is not what's going, what's happening now. Our students are forced to work in school 10 to 12 hours a day, four days a week, and then six hours on the fifth day. They have homework, they have family, they have other responsibilities that they can't do. And their question to me is, what can you do to help us?
One minute.
And I don't have an answer for that. So it is unreasonable for a student to have to go to school 10 to 12 hours a day and then still have to do their normal routines in life and then study. So our success rates are down. The current effect is, the national board scores that we just got back this last semester are the lowest ever in the history of the college, of our program. We even had students fail. Now, that has never happened. The only thing that has changed is the fact that we don't have the winter intercession to prepare our students to study and pass this exam. We also have to teach them preclinical and advanced clinical skills at the same time in the same semester. So they don't even have a good foundation. So we're teaching them advanced skills and basic skills at the same time, and so their ability to meet the requirements of our program is very diminished. And some of them are failing because of that. So if we're about student success, then we need to start thinking about the students.
Thank you.
And make them successful again.
After this rose, Ms. Michelle Gellman, Charlotte Williams, and Jordan Orozco.
Well, I'll try to make this really quick and I'll excise a lot of my letter, but what I wanted to do was to address the pedagogical arguments that the district has given for the student-centered calendar without the winter intercession. So I'll just look at their evidence for a moment. And despite all the charts and graphs and the websites that you've been offered tonight to look at, if you examine it very carefully, you'll see this, not only how flimsy this evidence is, but how downright misleading. First, the district claims that eliminating winter session will increase student persistence by eliminating exit points. What is persistence? A student's successful completion of sequential classes that enable her to transfer to a four-year school. What are exit points? According to the district, the elimination of winter intercession, thus enabling a quick transition from fall to spring semester, in its calendar eliminates exit points where students can drop out and cites the websites, College Complete America and Complete by Design is evidence. Go on these websites. You'll see that eliminating exit points where students drop out has nothing to do with reconfiguring the calendar, but it has to do with eliminating basic skills classes, non-credit, non-transferable classes in English and math.
One minute.
All right, fine, then look at the evidence. So I'll move on quickly, all right? I won't talk about the dismal performance of Rosemead and the low enrollment of the classes this summer. But anyway, let's talk about what's happened to the reconfiguring of the classes in the summer. Let's look at block scheduling, for example. How has block scheduling and this extended summer session promoted student success? On April 11th, the district increased the number of units students could take in summer school from eight to 19.3 units and implemented this change in Lancer Point without consulting collegially with the Academic Senate. The district will probably argue that increasing the number of units is pedagogically sound, but some could equally argue that this increase in units was an attempt to attract students and thus increase FTEs. Now, I'll just go to a concrete example, all right? This is not hypothetical. This is a real student. She's taking.
Thank you.
No, I want to finish.
Thank you.
She's taking four, three-unit classes on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday.
We have parliamentary procedure here.
She's taking political science and history of South Asia on Thursday, Friday, Saturday. She's taking cultural anthropology and Asian history of Pacific Americans. This means that this student sits in class six hours a day, six days a week, for the past six weeks. And how do you think she's going to be successful?
You're taking time for other speakers.
Well, I'm very sorry, but I will email you her grades next.
We've been getting emails all day. Thank you.
Michelle Gellman, Charlotte Williams, and Jordan Orozco. Ms. Gellman is not here?
I'm Charlotte Williams. And Dr. Flowers, I am one of your constituents and I vote in our district, your district. Okay? I'm talking about the quest, statements which were made, unfortunately or fortunately, by a memo which was sent to the senior staff at PCC dealing with questions of equality of the college. And one of the major premises in the confidential memo that was sent by Mr. Rocha on the 17th of April is that PCC is not a good college. Now, that makes a lot of not really good sense when in fact you're the managers of the college. But on the other hand, we have percentages from sources of the Community College Success Scorecard, which indicate that, in fact, in 14, in 12 of 14 areas, we are above the state averages, which indicates that we must not be that bad, otherwise we would have been considerably lower. We also find that we are a historically minority college, particularly we are recognized, I say historically, Latin, Latino college, and that is going to cause certain kinds of challenges to us, both academically and otherwise. And those need to be addressed.
One minute.
And in those areas, we are in fact above the state records, above the state averages. For Latinos in all but two areas, for African-Americans, we are above that also across the state collegiate level, and we are above our neighboring sister colleges, Santa Monica, Glendale, Mount SAC, and Citrus. So obviously, we're not doing that badly in many of these ways in the standards that you would use. Also cited was, in the same particular memo, was the fact that many other options are available in public and private colleges. And cited particularly is Portmont College, which is a private school run by St. Mary's Unit College, which is a very private Catholic girls' school. It's a great concept. Unfortunately, it's 400 bucks a unit, and most of our students can't afford that. So they would not then be able to use it. And so it's an incorrect comparison. It's like apples and oranges. It may be education, or to put it this way, it's Baskin Robbins, but you're adding yogurt and ice cream. It doesn't work together in the same way.
Thank you for your comments.
Quite well.
After Mr. Orozco, Dan Haley, Glenna Waterston, and Lilia Risson.
Hi, Board, or some of you. So I'm going to go ahead and real quick and read a letter from your student trustee who's away at the minute, but I'm just here, wanted to read a statement from him. So he said, "Hello, everyone. You may see, you may have seen the empty student trustee seat and asked yourself, 'What kind of student trustee doesn't show up for his first meeting?'" "The answer is the kind that digs in 100-degree weather while sand blows in his mouth instead of taking the cushion seat in the air-conditioned room. I'm sorry, I will not be participating tonight, but I feel the need to have my counterpart in the fight for student success and happiness read these few lines." That's me. "First, the decision before the Board today is a serious one. It is not easy to vote on something that changes the lives of so many who work or attend PCC, especially when you have a crowd on both sides speaking just as adamantly. So try to be nice. Also, the Board has simply not had enough time to hear the facts and have reasonable debates about anything regarding this issue. No matter who you wish to blame for this, we're here on June 25th, one month from fall semester, and we need a calendar. Lastly, I would like to say that if I had to cast my advisory vote today, it would have to be on the side of having a winter intercession. All things considered, I am a representative of the students, and they, as well as their elected representatives, have not reversed their pro-winter stance as a majority, no matter what anyone else has told you students want. Thank you, Marshall Lewis."
Dan Haley. Dan?
Good evening. I'm Dan Haley. I'm the treasurer of the Academic Senate. Tonight, I'd like to also correct one part of the FAQs that you received in regard to the calendar. The first FAQ says that the calendar is not a 10-plus-one issue. And I'm sorry, but that's simply not the case. If the proposed calendar only dealt with starting and ending dates, then yes, it would be operational. But it doesn't. It eliminates winter intercession, and that affects program development, which is number four on the list, and also affects student success, which is number five on this. How do we know this? We know it from the complaints from the students who have been protesting all this time for a winter intercession. We know it from the complaints from the faculty who claim that their, their students are not able to progress through their, their programs. And we even know it from, from the administration because in their presentation tonight, they're going to talk about educational impacts. Now, we don't agree with the claims that they may make, but the administration can't have it both ways. They can't claim it's not an academic, it doesn't affect academics and, and claim it does.
One minute.
On 10-plus-one, all matters are 10-plus-one. The California Code of Regulations and the Board Policy 2000 requires mutual agreement between the Boards designee and the Academic Senate. The Academic Senate has never agreed to the elimination of winter intercession. I'm going to urge you, please, vote for the calendar with winter intercession so we can come back into compliance with the Code of Regulations and our own policies. Thank you.
Hi, Glenna Waterston. I work in natural sciences. We've got quite a division here on campus. We have a lot of faculty, you say all the faculty want winter. I know all my faculty don't want winter in science and math. I would hate to be. I would.
Give her the respect to speak.
I would hate to be a Chem 2A student who struggled to get through Chem 2A and have to wait 10 weeks to take Chem 2B. But we're not going to agree on this. I can see that right now, we're not going to agree. But I do want you to know, there is another side to this, so you know. My second comment is, I've sat on the Calendar Committee for many years. I have done exactly what the Senate has asked me to do. I go to the Senate meetings, I tell them what's going on. I have been proactive, and you can ask previous Senate people if I've been involved. I voted yes on behalf of the Classified Senate at the Calendar Meeting. I went to a Senate meeting before that and was told that was the right vote. Apparently, nobody can find the minutes, that's not my responsibility. But I, I feel it would be unjust to change that vote from a, from a no to a yes, because this was all done, even, even a year ago, we were saying no to winter. So.
One minute.
But my esteemed colleague here seems to think that I, I'm mistaken here. So anyway, I just wanted to clear that up. There's two sides to this. We're all going to disagree on this, but I just want you to see another side. Thank you.
Lilia. And after Lilia Risson, Melissa Michelson, Sarai Mozika, and Renee Heserjian.
My name is Lilia. I'm a student at PCC, and I represent an opinion of other students. And we think that situation in PCC calendar is wrong, not only because the summer or winter semester is better or worse, but because semesters always have been changing. Students don't know what they are going to have next year. It's hard to make education plans because we never know how many semesters we're going to have and how long they will be. For example, in 2010, PCC had winter semester and spring started in February. In 2012, all of winter semester was taken off and spring started in January 5th. In spring 2013, I heard we have two springs. And now, in 2014, we have two summers. Next year, school wants to start spring on January 14 instead of February, of January 5th. I personally have a problem with it. I studied in CSC campus four years ago when it was winter semester and spring usually started at February.
One minute.
I decided to come back to school this year, and I wanted to start in a spring semester. I tried to enroll in early January, which was already too late. In fact, I lost spring semester, which I could have used to study, but the semester had changed. School calendar should always be the same, otherwise students can't make their education plans, or they have to go to another school to reach their education goals. It's not clear if we're going to keep new calendar, will work, it will work for school or not, because so many people are against it. That's why I think it's better to keep usual calendar with winter and summer semester, which had been working for all of us for 10 years. And I have a couple of letters from other students, if I can give it to you.
Time.
Can you give it to the secretary?
Thank you.
Hello, PCC Board of Trustees and community members of Pasadena City College. My name is Sarai Mohika. I am a third-year queer undocumented student here at PCC. I am here today to voice against the 2014-2015 calendar without winter intercession. The administration wants to push through again. When I came to PCC in 2011, I had not planned on attending a community college, but my status forced me to decline my acceptance to UC Santa Cruz because of the lack of financial and academic support, as many students like me have experienced. Coming to PCC in 2011, I had to work to afford PCC's tuition and books, as my sisters and brother did before me and are still doing. The Board of Governors' fee waiver became accessible to the undocumented students through AB 131 in 2012. The Bog waiver is only offered to full-time students. However, everyone, not everyone can take on 12 units at once. If you are working to sustain yourself and your family while taking 12 units, it takes an immense amount of work and dedication. These are daily realities students face. Working, working school overlap, and when PCC's school calendar switches from a four-term calendar, which gives you leeway to save for spring semester, to a three-term calendar with no time to save, your stress levels rise and are harmful to your health. And not all of us have access to healthcare. Many students get burnt out and a two-year transfer plan turns into four years. PCC transfer rate has dropped to, from 20% from the 2011-2012 to 2012-2013. Two back-to-back 16-week semesters are harsh learning conditions for many students. Two back-to-back 16-week semesters are harsh learning conditions for many students. All this data may just be statistics to push forward your agendas, but these are real people's lives and health that are being affected. With the decrease of the FTEs, classes that students have enrolled in get canceled before school starts. Opening a satellite campus makes it hard for students who have difficulty commuting to enroll into classes in Rosemead. Opening more online classes disrupts the learning experience, and no vacation time from spring to fall. All of this pushes students away. The constant change made by administration without student consensus and no insight as to who attends your college outside of your selected programs is harmful. I hope when I transfer from PCC, I'm not part of another statistic, but as a token that all student lives matter.
After Ms. Michelson, Mimi Lee, Dave Kuah, and Philip Rickards.
Hello. My name is Renee Heserjian. I'm a student here at PCC. For the last two years, the administration has imposed a calendar that has been a recipe for student burnout. Those of us whose goal it is to transfer are overloading on classes during fall and spring to compensate for the absence of winter, and as a result, are forced to stay here longer than anticipated. Back-to-back summer intercessions either gives us little time for a break or a break that is far too long. These, along with numerous other problems, have resulted from the hasty cancellation of winter in 2012. None of the warnings that students and faculty issued were considered by the administration, while most, if not all of them, have proved to be true. Students were forced to increase their stay at PCC, especially working students and those with financial difficulties. Transfer numbers decreased by 20%. The extended spring being changed back to summer one created unnecessary problems, which sabotaged some students' educational goals. And the extended spring fiasco caused the federal government to demand PCC to reimburse financial aid money that had already been distributed to students. By completely ignoring student voices and shared government, more problems were created, and little had been done to solve them. The full extent of the negative consequences are unknown, such as how many students chose to leave or to not attend PCC for other colleges that have winters, such as SMC or Mount Sac. Before the winter was cut, I was able to take classes at other community colleges, ones which were full at PCC, but now I cannot due to the clashing academic calendars. Some may claim that in fighting for winter intercession, we are beating a dead horse, or that we just need to move on and things will be better. But my educational progress is not a dead horse, and to move on would be to ignore the damage that is being done. Students still ask me, "Why doesn't PCC have a winter?" Telling students to move on is a way to suppress the student voice on campus. PCC is supposed to facilitate student voices and critical thinking skills. Thank you.
Again, I'm faculty from the College Council's Calendar Committee. Calendar Draft 2, the one the President wants, did not go through participatory or shared governance, and there are many problems with it. Because the committee did not look at it, discuss it, take it back to our constituents, and fine-tune it, if you approve it, whatever consequences that follow for our college, faculty labor, PCC students, and our accreditation will be on your hands. Use the calendar that was actually vetted in committee. Roche's was not. Draft 2 with winter was voted on and Senate-approved. Roche's was not. And then, it was voted on and College Council approved. Roche's was not. For those that do not know, the Calendar Committee is a shared governance standing committee of the College Council. Representatives from staff, faculty, students, and management are on there. Dr. Bell called only two meetings this whole year, but both at the very end of the year. The committee specifically voted down the administration's calendar and approved the vetted calendar with winter by overwhelming majority. Then, at the College Council meeting the following week, President Roche pushed through his same calendar without the winter and without allowing for a vote. The College Council decided to reconvene and finally voted to approve Draft 2, which you have in front of you. All of these meetings are on video on YouTube. For the record, if you choose the Roche calendar, any unforeseen circumstances that occur now will be because you have chosen a calendar that did not go through proper shared governance and vetting. Why not vote on a calendar with winter that students, faculty, and staff want? Are you just digging in your heels? Why go along with the unilateral calendar of a president who is actively searching for other employment in order to leave our institution? Why go along with a calendar that the administration presents to you without valid data, clear citations of studies, survey results, nor any votes in either Senate or College Council? Essentially, what you're doing is holding the student calendar hostage and using the excuse of the perp unfair labor. Students cannot make their ed plans nor counselors properly advise students. We cannot plan for the future. No wonder students are leaving PCC, as evidenced by the loss of almost 5,000 FTEs over the past few years, and worst of where the worst of similar colleges around. Finally, faulty calendar planning is not going to bode well with accreditation, and it will be the fault of the administration, not the faculty, the students, or the staff. Thank you.
I'm David Kewitt. I teach in graphic communications. At a College Council meeting, Crystal Colaross and Cynthia Leavell reported that it's not possible to institute a calendar that the Calendar Committee voted on because it would affect the veterans' aid. They said the veterans wouldn't get their aid if there are weeks off between the semesters, but the record shows that the veterans never lost aid when winter was in effect. There was no problem. Benefits were not delayed and not lost. The calendar that President Roche has sent over here is one that he wants. It's not too late for each of you to do the right thing and vote down the President's personal calendar and reinstate winter. Our success, our retention, our persistence, we're fine with winter. We had more FTEs with winter. And when you vote for the calendar with winter, you vote for a calendar that was actually vetted by the whole school. Anything less will continue to bring down our reputation, perpetuate the campus climate problems, hinder student transfers, impede funding from the state, and be a mark on your records. Another year with this calendar, the numbers don't lie. Student consumers will simply continue to leave PCC to go to competing and neighboring schools.
One minute.
Thank you. We need to offer winter so we can start growing now, because the Band-Aid solutions that have been tried over the last two years just haven't worked. Thank you.
My name is Mimi Lee. I'm a student at PCC. And I just want to briefly mention that at one of the Board Trustees' meeting concerning the calendar a few months ago, one of the reasons why winter was omitted was because students perform worse during six-week courses. So I don't see the logic in making students do two consecutive six-week courses. So I would like you to consider having an intercession and then a semester, intercession and then a semester. That would make more sense if you are looking to improve student success. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and administrators and faculty. I'm Phil Rickards. I teach in Philosophy Department. And I have been perusing the data presented in the Board Packet. And it's amazing to me that the construction of the proponents of this, who put this forward, don't even understand their own data. I remember in this connection with the quote from a great American humorist writer and social critic, namely Mark Twain, who said, "There are lies, damn lies, and statistics." And this is an example. To back that up, to back up that claim, I did my own little number crunching. And determining, looking at student outcomes based on Attachment 5, which is this one here, okay? I computed the number of degrees that were granted when we had winter and when we had not winter. We didn't have winter. AA degrees without winter, 1,011. AA degrees, this is an average, okay? There are four years of non-winter on the chart, nine years with winter. Winter, 1,133. In other words, 11% better with winter than without winter. AS degrees. Now, these have been on decline for a long, long time, for whatever reason. But the figures are these. Non-winter, 709 degrees. With winter, 558, which is 21% better than winter. Total certificates, non-winter, 672. Winter, 666, which is a minuscule and meaningless difference of 6 out of 1,338, I think. And transfers to CSU, non-winter, 958. With winter, 1,188, 20% better than with non-winter.
Mary Erin Crook.
Okay, thank you. Mary Erin Crook.
Transfers to UC, non-winter, 430. Winter, 533, 23% better than non-winter. Thank you.
My name is Mary Erin Crook. I'm a member of the PCC faculty and a resident of the district. I wish to address the calendar tonight from a taxpayer perspective, and I encourage the Board to probe this issue beyond the materials that are provided by the administration. The shift from a calendar with winter to one without has costed district taxpayers money in the following ways: directly through the loss of FTEs, and indirectly due to costly administrative missteps which have intended to recover from this loss. According to the Chancellor's website, Data Mart, on the Chancellor's website, our FTEs have declined to a greater degree than other area schools. And I am summarizing, in the interest of saving time here. Why the downward trend at PCC? Students like winter. In fact, at other area community colleges, students continue to, other area community colleges continue to include winter in their calendars. Glendale, Mount Sac, Santa Monica offer winter and showed strong increases in their FTEs, both in winter and overall. Start and stop dates with other academic entities like area high schools, four-year schools, public and private, have caused problems with our FTE decline. Cancellation of winter has caused extreme instability on campus stemming from the appeal of the perp case and the sudden mid-year change of calendar in August of 2012. Costs extend beyond the direct loss of FTEs. Campus instability worsened as administrators tried to recoup FTEs funding. Extended spring was added. Students couldn't transfer those units. Top administrators and counselors were taken off their regular duties to clean up the mess. Last fall, the Rosemead campus was activated. Numerous sections were canceled. Many have low enrollment. In addition to the $3 million lease fee at Rosemead, the Rosemead experiment carries costs for ad campaigns, additional staff, and remodeling. Winter works at many area community colleges. As a teacher, I believe our decisions ought to be made based on what's best for our students. And as a taxpayer, I resent the waste and inefficiencies created by the calendar fiasco. The taxpayers of the district shouldn't bear the costs of this change. However, the greatest cost is that borne by the students, and that is a shame. Thank you.
I'm Kristin Pilon, faculty member and incoming Senate Vice President. I would like to ask the Board members to please pay very close attention to the information on the Packet that's being provided to you by the administration. Please ask them for evidence for the claims that they make. There are several things I'm going to talk about. Exit points. The administration has claimed that exit points are a problem, and if there are shorter breaks, it eliminates exit points. When we had a winter, and a semester, and a summer, and a semester, there were about 10-week gaps in between the semesters. Now, with two summers, there's potentially a 14-week gap for students. Students that have to travel, or go abroad, or get jobs, may start working and just not come back to school for that entire time. If that's a problem, the double summer schedule aggravates the problem. It does not improve it. They also claim that exit points cause low persistence. Please read some of the literature that the administration refers you to in their booklet. Exit points have nothing, sorry, persistence has nothing to do with the calendar. It is about the kind of educational programs you offer at the college. We are working on those things already. The calendar is irrelevant to that. The effects of winter have been that we have lost FTEs. We have created this Rosemead campus with its cancellations and its bumbled bureaucracy. We have increased the summer load for students from 8.3 units to 19.8 units, which is against your policy. Did you know that? Did you allow that to happen? That was done without any approval by shared governance bodies. It was just done by somebody on this campus. You have unilaterally instigated things, the administration, without approval of the Senate, and it's a violation of policies. Please also pay very close attention to Chart Number 1. If it's true that having winter was bad for persistence, please look at what happened when they took winter away, according to their own data. This is like, they are not telling you the truth. And if you don't read these materials, and ask for evidence, and ask questions, you're having the wool pulled over your eyes. And please, we would like you to pay attention to what we're telling you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waugh. This evening, I've asked both the administration and shared governance to--
I'm sorry to interrupt you once again. There's Michelle Ireland-Gallman, who has a card there, too. Could you please check trustee Waugh?
I called her, but no one came. I called her several times.
I didn't hear it.
Okay. She did submit a card. I called several times.
Thank you.
I am so sorry. Maybe I'm just going deaf. Okay. Hi. My name is Michelle Ireland-Gallman. I teach psychology and sociology, and I'm a proud member of the Social Sciences Division. As social sciences faculty, we look beyond what is seen, and we also question the common sense. These graphs here look very, very good, and I commend whoever developed them. They look wonderful. And it's interesting that my colleague, Phil Rickards, also came up with some numbers, but there's been an absence of data. And so I decided to analyze this data that has been presented on this paper and see if there is a significant difference in student persistence, classification, student degrees, student certificates, and student transfers. T-tests were conducted for each of the areas of interest for the years in which there was no winter session and for the years in which the winter session was in place. In addition, a linear trend analysis was performed in each area to see if there was a linear increase or growth, a significant one statistically--
One minute.
--decrease, oh, shoot, or change in, oh, well, just let me get to the results then. You can read the big, big report on your desk. Okay. With regard to persistence, prior to the implementation of winter intercession, the trend of persistence among students overall was negative, and there was no statistically significant difference among the groups of African-Americans, Latinos, Asians, or Caucasians. That is prior to winter. Persistence after the winter session was installed began to show a statistically significant positive trend for overall students and for Latino, Asian, and Caucasian groups specifically. African-American groups did not show any difference before or after intercession. With regard to student classification, while the chart indicates that there was a decline in continuing students, in fact, they tell you that there's a decline in continuing students, I did a statistical analysis on that and found that students prior to winter, there was no statistically significant difference, no change. And after winter was instituted, it also yielded no statistical significant difference. So there is no difference in our decrease in continuing students. All the data is in the report that is presented to you. Lastly, I just, please indulge me for a sec. The percentage of first-time students showed significant positive linear trend for the nine years. So our first-time students--
Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
Okay, whatever.
This is a democracy. Ms. Waugh, thank you for your good job. This evening, I've asked for shared governance to present a report on the calendar, and I've asked the administration. I think, I don't think any of the trustees here that are coming with a blank mind are interested in learning about both sides, and Mr. Cairo will go first. 10 minutes.
Thank you.
Am I timing that, too? Or do we not worry?
Thank you, trustee fellows. Let me begin by stating that, having run several meetings, I appreciate the need to hold expeditious meetings. However, common sense must at some point rule the day. If the purpose of a meeting is to provide the Board with all the necessary information to allow them to make an informed decision, then why would you want to limit us from providing you with the much-needed information? If we were to take an example of what just happened right now, I would say, is there a mercy rule? Because right now, it's like 20 to 1, and 20 people are at least in favor of the calendar with a winter. One person said no. That just makes no sense to me. I truly believe that it is because of all the bad recommendations, the lack of information, that so many bad decisions have occurred on campus. I do not know who made the decision to limit the Board's right to hear this much-needed information, but whoever did has done a great disservice to our campus. Let me now address some of the key points to the-- Let me now address some of the key points to the presentation. The academic student calendar. Well, again, the students voted for a winter. The students did not vote for a calendar without. So, for the district to state -- to include the word "student," shame on them. The statements, "The faculty rejects the district's calendar of 2014-2015." How can they call it a student calendar when they voted against it? It also states -- I'd like to say that in the presentation you're about to hear, it says that there was consultation. Absolutely not true. A presentation was given presenting the students -- excuse me, the district's information, and a presentation does not constitute a consultation. Furthermore, at the college council meeting, the calendar with a winter was not discussed in which the chair of the committee, Dr. Rocha chaired. The Associated Students condemns lack of participatory governance and have never been asked for input by the administration on calendar 2013, 2014, or 2014, 2015. Therefore, again, let me repeat, this is not a student calendar. Let's go to -- is starting winter now operational in terms of financial aid? Administration gives a false dilemma logic. The administration claims that it's not operational. It's too late now to have winter. But why is it too late? Well, it's not. Bottom line, the calendar has changed. The last time the calendar was changed in late August 2012. Right now, it's the end of June, two months prior to August, so we do have time to do this. Is it possible to reinstate the winter now? Absolutely. According to financial aid, nothing has been inputted into the computer as of Monday, June 24th. We do not have a fully automated system yet, therefore dates can be changed. Financial aid deadlines have not yet passed. And if there's any doubt to these statements, we can always ask financial aid to verify my statement right now. Additionally, the administration claims, "Starting winter now equals more confusion and problems for students." Well, what survey statistics studies back this up? Certainly, the faculty were not consulted. The faculty deal with students on a daily basis. They would be able to ask questions. Maybe the counselors were asked. Well, if we were to suppose that counselors asked the students, that would be -- if whether or not there was confusion, that would be a monumental task, given the fact that, according to the chancellor's website, we have 885 students to one counselor. So, exactly how much communication can really happen, given this ratio? Will the counselors have enough time to ask the students, "Hey, are you confused about having a winter?" Faculty who have direct contact with the students, again, do not believe this to be true. Once again, the faculty have not been -- have not conducted any survey, so the question here is, where is the data to support the statement? Time and time again, in the information be provided by the district, you will see that they lack any type of statistical data to sustain their claims. Next issue, they're saying that they're causing it, that they're saying that it's confusing. Why is that confusing? Because currently, our calendar has at least eight different start dates. That could be confusing. If you want really something confusing, go to our -- go to the online to try to find a course. I challenge the board of trustees to find a course, to go find history, psychology, anything, and see how difficult that is. That's confusing. Administration claims that reinstating winter equals that it's not fiscally prudent or efficient. Well, if this is true, how much money has been saved these last two years without a winter? What are the costs of having a winter? What is the line item that shows the difference over the years? Bottom line, if you're going to make the statement, where's the proof? I believe that a math instructor would ask to see the calculations, to show how students arrive at their conclusions. So, I'm asking the district, "Show me your calculations. How did you arrive at this statement?" Bottom line is that, in terms of efficiency, there is no difference. Having a winter is that the administration claims that having a winter is inefficient? Where are the comparisons? Let's compare a calendar with a winter, a calendar without a winter, but again, there are no comparisons. There is no proof of these statements. Access and success. The administration claims that more course sections can be offered in extended summer. Really? Why? Who makes -- who determines how many classes or courses are going to be offered in a particular intercession? You can offer 1,000, you can offer 500, you can offer 50. It's up to the administration to determine how many classes. So, the fact that this statement, more course sections can be offered in an extended summer, is completely false. Does the month determine how many classes you can offer? June, only 500, but maybe July, well, let's only give 30. What's the difference in the month? The bottom line is, again, these are false statements that the college is providing. This is the information that I hope that you will be using to make your vote or determine your vote. Also, increased number of offered classes does not mean full enrollment. We have this semester to test proof, as already been stated several times. Rosemead, we started off with 92, 93. We're now wearing the 50s. Why? Well, just because you offer the classes does not mean that the students will come. So, why are they not coming? Well, I guess that sort of -- that answer -- that question's already been answered because of the various bad decisions that has been taken by the board as a result of accepting the recommendations of the current president. Now, the board -- now, to the board members. Again, more course sections offer an extended -- more course sections can be offered in extended summer. False. Bottom line is this: one summer, one winter equals one summer or summer, one summer, two. In either case, you still have two sessions. It's not that difficult. Continue along with access and success. The administration claims, "More pedagogically sound classes can happen without a winter, especially in math and science." Really? Again, where is the data to support that? And does that mean that these courses are more pedagogically sound than other classes offered on campus? That doesn't make sense either. What about our other programs? What about programs such as our Oxford-Trolle abroad program, dental hygiene, Manzanar? We can no longer offer our students the opportunity to travel to Manzanar because of the lack of winter intercession. Now, if we look at it from the administrative point of view, what they're claiming is, they're always looking at, "How -- what can we do to make more money?" Well, the statement has been offered, or has been made by the administration, that the social sciences has been referred to as the cash cow of the college. That being the case, why not offer more courses from the social science division? I mean, if you're interested in money, that's what you should be doing. So, more -- again, where is the information? Where is the data? Where are the statistics to say that math and sciences, to offer these type of courses, are more pedagogically sound during without a winter? Continuing along, access and success. The administration claims, "Less compression for time-intensive courses is better." This is a false positive logic. You're showing a benefit that doesn't really exist. There already is a compression with the two summers. So, what's the difference? One summer, one winter, two summers. It's the same thing. Finally, I'd like to state that the benefits, without a doubt, outweigh the negative. Is everyone going to agree? No. But the bottom line is, having a winter benefits the students, benefits the college in the long run. And I hope that you have diligently paid attention to the comments of everyone here, and I hope that you vote in favor of having a winter. Thank you.[1155.75][1155.75](APPLAUSE).
Ten minutes. Okay, well, now we're going to turn to the administration's presentation.
Yeah, I'd like to turn this over to Dr. Miller and Dr. Bell and colleagues in the administration who have prepared the recommendation for the board of trustees. Dr. Miller?
Thank you.
And also, wanted to note that this is the first time officially I'm able to address you as Dr. Miller, so congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Rocha. Thank you.
Take it away.
Thank you, sir. So, the agenda item, the action item, board agenda item is item F, so the official recommendation of the -- of the board, of -- excuse me, of the administration is there for the board's consideration. This evening, we are going to ask Dr. Levo, who is our Associate Vice President for Student Services or Student Affairs, Dr. Sammy McBride, who is our Associate Vice President for Enrollment Services, and Ms. Crystal Calross, who is our Director of Institutional Research, to present for the administration on this topic. So, I'll turn it over to Dr. Levo and company.
I do want, before you begin, there are -- there is going to be no questions to the board of trustees. These are presentations. You had your presentation. It will go to the board of trustees, and they will be the only speakers after our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Board of Trustees, faculty, staff, and students. On behalf of the administration, I am presenting the educational impacts of a calendar without winter. According to a national organization called Complete College America, they provide guidance to various states, and a few of the pieces of guidance they offer is for colleges to eliminate exit points, both structurally from term to term as well as in course curriculum design. Also, it's important to look at the busy lives of students to try and match the needs of the students with the design of the calendar. There is another national organization called Completion by Design, a national organization that is also providing guidance to many states, and they ask that we also look at helping students move directly from fall into spring very easily and swiftly, so that we can gain momentum and help our students gain that momentum from going from fall to spring, which are two primary instructional terms.
So, I prepared this chart using the chancellor's office data, and what we're looking at here, and I wanted to really emphasize the red bar, and I put that line across so you could see where it fell. The line, the red bar, or the red area of each bar is our continuing students. Those are the students who were here in the fall and then came back in the spring. And what you can see is, when we introduced winter, that that bar started going down, and when we took winter out, it started going back up again. Now, it's not the end-all, be-all to data, but it does show a significant trend.
About the recession.
Listen, we gave you respect. Give her respect. Act like professors, okay? Go ahead, Crystal.
It wasn't a professor, by the way.
Act like a human being at a public hearing, okay?
So, this caused us some concern to see that we were losing our continuing students. As Dr. Levo has pointed out to you, we try as much as possible to eliminate exit points and to encourage persistence. Oh, it's still me. Yay. Okay. So, this chart is, and what I was trying to illustrate here is what happened when we introduced winter and when we took out winter. Now, you can see that we started to decline in our persistence. This, again, is fall to spring, but I wanted to break it out by ethnicity because we're trying more and more to disaggregate our data. As you can see, it went down, not a real lot, but what happened when we took out winter is we saw this huge jump. Now, it was a bigger jump than I ever imagined, and I'm sure it's going to stabilize out. But this year, without another winter, it dropped a little, but I think it's going to stabilize somewhere out around 70% to 75%, and that's a very good persistence rate across the state.
Also, in relation to access and success, more course sections can be offered in an extended summer session, either in a six, eight, 12, or 14-week time period. Curriculum can be provided in a pedagogically sound manner, especially in the math and the sciences, and prevents curriculum from being compressed into fewer overall days, which can be difficult for time-intensive courses. Also, a three-session start date provides less scheduling and planning confusion for students and operational and fiscal efficiency.
Outcomes, yes. What we did here is, we took a look. What you would -- what I would have expected to see when I was developing this chart, if winter was going to impact outcomes, I would have expected to see a nice little linear incline in degrees, certificates, and transfers. And I didn't see that when we built this. Instead, what I saw is, as was pointed out earlier, we saw a decline in the AS degrees, but we really don't see a steady incline across the board here in any of our student outcomes, which causes us some concern.
So, what we were able to do here is to offer a different way of planning for the next year of 1516, that we're asking that the calendar that we are proposing to you now to be adopted and moving forward, that we would then look at a timeline for the calendar committee to meet. And so, this diagram represents that, that we would look for the calendar committee to meet somewhere in early September -- I'm sorry, in late September, and then move through a process from each month meeting and discussing the topic, so then that we're able to present a calendar to you in a timely manner, which will represent somewhere around in January. And so, this document, this chart represents that.
Thank you. The one other item I just wanted to clarify, or at least state, the data that I believe the Academic Senate and the others were using to report enrollment was, I think, 1213 data. 1314 data, as a result of the P2, which actually just arrived last Thursday evening or Friday morning, would indicate that our enrollments are dramatically up, and thanks to the good work of our faculty, our staff, and our administration, we have significant additional revenue based upon FTEs and achievement. So, I just wanted to state that, just for clarity. Actually, in the tentative budget report, we'll mention this. And also, I would like to thank our institutional research staff for the work that they've done, but also, I believe that we are responding to all the requests for data from the Academic Senate and others as we attempt to be very transparent about providing data to anybody who needs it as we continue to work through this issue.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions from trustees to staff? Ms. Waugh?
Couple of questions. You know, I also -- I'm glad Dr. Miller clarified the lag in the data, because I also reviewed the chancellor's data, you know, and I do believe that the Academic Senate is correct. It shows that there was a drop. So, when I asked why, you know, it did -- they did explain that there was a lag in data and were able to show that there was an increase. I didn't understand the comment, though, from the Academic Senate, that there were eight exit points. It does seem to me, the more exit points you have, it did seem to me that there's pretty compelling data that there would be some, probably, I guess, a drop in the persistence. So, I didn't know. Where were the eight exit points that you referred to?
Do you have the packet?
Oh, okay. All right. I'll clear your packet.
I really don't want to get into a conversation with the audience.
Okay. So, just in general comments, you know, I guess, for me, this is, I think it's been an ongoing and a very difficult discussion. I know that, you know, I talked to the faculty, and they presented their data, and it seems compelling. I talked to the administration, and they present their data, and I think it's compelling. But I feel like the board is being put in a position of also having to make a decision, and he said, she said. So, it's kind of like a Solomon's baby kind of an issue, you know, and without really -- so, then I have to question, if you're using the same data, then why is there such a different interpretation? And so, when I've asked questions, why, you know, we don't seem to be able to align the data. I've gotten feedback that, oh, we didn't get the data when we asked for it, or there's a misinterpretation of data. So, I don't know. I -- just a general comment, I really hope that we could resolve it, because otherwise, I think you put the -- I think that the board, then, is in a very difficult position of having to believe one group over another. The other comment I wanted to make is, I do know that there are a number of students who have come here, a number of faculty. You know, I run into people all the time. Sometimes people -- You know, I run into people all the time, sometimes people in my district, sometimes people outside of the district, but still in the PACCD area. And so I always ask, you know, how are things going? How does this calendar change affect you? What did you like? What didn't you like? What processes have worked and not worked? But almost every student I have asked, and this is just random, so I'm not picking anybody in particular, just people that I run into, have said this, that the elimination of the winter session actually is a better calendar configuration for them. So it doesn't mean it's necessarily true. It just is that that happens to be the feedback, but I have to say that these are just random people. They're not aligned with anyone. Those are my comments.
Mr. Salvage?
Right. Is this the only opportunity we're going to have to, as a trustee, to talk about this issue? Okay. I've got a question about Chart Number One that was put up. Can I get an answer on that?
The student classification?
Right. Student classification. Wait a minute. Yes, I think, was that the... Right, it was pointed out that during the time when there was a winter intercession on this graph, the red continuing student dropped down. Now, this graph is in terms of percent. Would it look different if it was in terms of the number of students?
I think, Crystal...
Did anybody run that? It's possible that the percent could be down, but if you've got a different number of students as the base, that you would have the same, more, a smaller drop, a bigger...
That's a very good question, and it just depends on how you look at it, of course. And if we have more enrollments, of course, or a larger head count, then it would be different. That's why we ran it by percent, but I could give it to you either way.
Well, I'd be interested in head, well, we're not going to do it tonight, I guess, but I'd be interested in head count rather than a percent of a base that I don't know how it's moving.
Absolutely. Happy to do it for you.
On Chart Number Two, the student persistence, I didn't, I guess, it indicates here where winter intercession was introduced, winter intercession was removed, and it seems the persistence is going, trending up.
Correct. It was trending up.
Clearly. But is that attributable, do people think that's attributable to there being a winter intercession?
I don't know.
I mean, I don't know how many factors could be affecting it.
I can honestly answer that for you, and excuse me, I think that's a fair answer. If I don't know, I should say, I don't know.
I appreciate that.
Anything else?
No, thank you. Not on your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Salvage.
Yeah, I, just the whole, the whole process that has unfolded here, and I've been on the Board for six months now, has been, to me, pretty strange. We've got an awful lot of assertions, data representations on different sides. I attended five different colleges and universities. I taught at one for over 15 years. I go through my PhD, I must have been in class for, a student for 12 years or something like that, but I've had an awful lot of experience, not recently here at PCC or in the community colleges. But the structure that we have now with the fall, spring, and then summer sessions is one with which I am familiar and relatively comfortable. I am intrigued by information that the opponents of the proposed calendar have brought up. I wish that there was more information that I had been given, specifically to rebut their representations about what changing back to a winter intercession would mean. This is not an easy call for me to make. I was elected to do that, but it's not an easy call for me to make. I know how I'm going to vote for this, for this one. I hope that this whole process runs a lot better when we meet to decide what the calendar's going to be next fiscal year. That's as diplomatically as I can put it.
Thank you, Dr. Salvage. Mr. Martin?
Some comments, but I'd yield to my colleagues on the phone, because I know it's hard for them to get a hand up, that we would see if either...
If I could, I'm about to be chased out at Starbucks, but I do have a couple of questions. We heard it a few times, or several times, about the other colleges in the districts that have winter intercessions. There are 127 community colleges in the state of California. Can you tell me how many have winter intercessions?
Question.
Twenty-five is what Crystal Kalros is saying.
Out of how many?
Out of 112.
A hundred and two do not. Is that correct?
It's 25 out of 112, so whatever that math is.
Okay. All right. And the other, the other comment I would like to, I would like to make is that I was a, you know, employed at Cal State Northridge for many years, and I still have many colleagues at Cal State Northridge. And one of the things that I had have heard is that with the winter intercession, because our students finish so late, it made it very difficult for our students to transfer to the Cal, to the Cal State. I don't know about the, about the UC. So we've heard that the session doesn't align with the high schools without the winter session, but it apparently didn't align with the Cal State. And it's also my understanding, that once you get beyond community colleges and you start looking at senior universities, you don't find winter intercessions. I mean, trustee Salvage just said that. My understanding, the Cal States' winter intercession is only through, you know, online courses. So I have also seen a great, a lot more information than we have presented tonight, which indicates that the long break makes it very difficult for students who are not college-ready to continue. So a college-ready student can go six to eight weeks between, say, Chemistry 1A or Mass, you know, or, say, English 1 and English 2, or whatever the sequence is in Mass, without any difficulty. But students who are not college-ready need continued reinforcement, and that they do better if they, without the break. And this is one of the things that we saw on the Student Success Task Force, by the way, that the, and I think she was calling them exit points, that exit points negatively affect, and persistent instruction is much more effective with students who are not college-ready. And since such a high percentage of our students are not college-ready, it's one of the reasons, in fact, it's one of the main reasons why I support the calendar proposed by the administration. And that concludes what I want to say.
Thank you, Dr. Mann. Mr. Thompson?
Can you, can you hear the music in the background?
No.
Can I hear what in the background?
The music.
The music in the background? No.
Okay, good.
Anyway, I appreciated very much the comments by both Dr. Mann and Dr. Salvage. I'm not that familiar with community colleges, or the Cal State systems, or whatever else, but the calendar system with which I am familiar, from having been to college and being familiar with colleges of our children and now grandchildren, it's a typical fall, spring, summer, three, or tri- semester setup, not the six-week winter intercession. I don't understand the argument that students are going to be able to learn better in this concentrated six-week period of time. I would think the opposite might really be the effect. I guess it would depend upon the student and the manner in which she or he is really going to learn. But one of the biggest frustrations I find in this entire issue, as with so many others on campus right now, is the, not the disagreement, but the vociferous and downright unpleasant manner in which this agreement is expressed. That really ought not to be. If our lack of, I mean, Dr. Fellow and I met with some members of the faculty administration, the union several weeks ago, and indeed, a couple of months ago, and asked if there is academic rationale that supports the winter intercession, please give it to us. And thus far, there really has not been anything significant that's been brought forth. And so it's a very frustrating decision to have to make, but given on, with what the comments are, given with the presentations, the facts of Dr. Levo and Ms. Kalros, et cetera, and my own experience with the tri-semester system, I think what the administration are proposing, what we went to before, is the better approach, is the one that makes sense and the one that I would be supportive of.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Martin?
Okay. I would like to begin by reiterating what I heard from each presentation, point by point. I'm doing this for a few reasons. First reason is, it shows that I was listening, because I really was trying to listen. Second, it may help you in the future to know what at least one trustee, who was really trying to be independent, heard, so that if I didn't hear it right, and I was really trying to hear it right, and I've tried to just bullet-point it, correct, you might alter your presentation. So I'm going to start with the Academic Senate presentation and list what I heard, and then I'm going to go through the administrative thing and list what I heard. So I heard that the students did not vote for winter. I heard that the faculty did not support the administration's calendar. I heard that the administration's calendar was not discussed appropriately with groups. I heard that prior calendars, and years were rattled off, had no input. I heard the statement that it is not too late to start winter. I heard that the statement that adding a winner now would be confusing has no statistical backing behind it to support that statement. I heard that the administrative recommendation without winter has eight start dates, and that that is confusing. And I, like my colleague, haven't quite figured out what the eight start dates were, and I was trying to get through your presentation to see them, but I heard there were eight start dates, and that's confusing. I heard the cost savings that were purported by the administration have not been proven. I heard that it was a false statement to make that more classes, that by not having winter means we'll have more classes, because class offerings are not a function of winter or summer, but of how many classes we offer. I heard that more classes do not equal more enrollment. I heard students aren't coming because of the superintendent president. That actually has nothing to do with the calendar debate, but that was a point made in the presentation, and I heard it. I heard that more math and science without winter has not, that there's a difficulty having more math and science without winter has never been proven. I heard that by not having winter, we are missing our field trip to Manzanar. I don't quite understand that, but I believe it. I heard that, that if we want to make more money, we should be offering more social science classes anyway, therefore, the fact that winter hurts math and science is not important for the terms of money. I heard that a winter compression is no different than a summer compression. Okay. Now, those are the arguments I heard, and that's exactly the way I heard them. I'm going to tell you what I heard from the administration. I heard that an organization titled Completion by Design says that it's important to align the two large semesters that are back-to-back that have the most students in them, and that would be fall and spring. I heard that the previous data shows that the continuing students dipped when we added winter, though it is not, no one can directly statistically say it's because of winter. It obviously, the statistics show that that happened. I heard that they presented a chart that showed that persistence has improved with the absence of winter. Again, it was stated that it can't be said that one is causing the other, but that the data shows that persistence improved. I heard that a longer summer intercession, or two summer intercessions, allows the flexibility of the college to offer both six, 12, and 18-week courses, which obviously couldn't be possible with one short intercession. I heard that in, by having, not having a winter intercession means there's only three start dates instead of four, which saves administrative time and is more efficient. I heard that there were no decline in student outcomes with the change with or without winter. And I heard that the administration wants to have a new calendar timeline, and was told that that's in order for the new calendar to be more participatory. Those are what I heard in the administrative presentation. We received numerous emails, they're all mostly anecdotal, and they, and I'll just give you my opinion. I tried to open and close each one and read them quickly. It seemed like, depending on what discipline you were teaching, had a lot of impact on whether you did or didn't want winter, and actually, that warmed my heart, that the faculty in each of these different disciplines were so concerned about students in their disciplines that they represented it from their discipline point of view. There has been, prior to this, a charge that the calendar is a 10-plus-one issue, and therefore, required to go through shared governance. I think because of the statements that have been made on both sides of that, I had, prior to this meeting, asked that question directly of legal counsel. I would appreciate, Mr. President, if we could just get a short answer that we heard, or at least that I got, from legal counsel on that issue to sort out for sure what is and isn't on that. I think that's the totality of the two sides that I heard. No, I just want you to know, we're not going to be here all night, but I made it honest effort.
To answer your question, I'd like to call on our attorney, Bruce. Do you want to answer his question?
I'm Bruce Barsuk, a law firm, Libra, Cassidy, Whitmore. As you know, I'm the district's chief negotiator, but also serve as special counsel with respect to labor and employment matters. It is correct that the Board did ask for a legal opinion with respect to whether the issue of academic calendar is governed by, or within the purview of academic senates under the so-called 10-plus-one rules. It's our legal opinion that, especially here, where we're not talking about a change in, like, adopting a compressed calendar, we're not talking about professional growth activities, flex week, and so on, that here, that there is no obligation to go through the 10-plus-one. Academic calendar is not within the 10-plus-one criteria. Obviously, this is not the time and place for me to discuss the basis for my opinion, but that is my opinion, that it is not covered by Title V.
Thank you. Is that it, Mr. Martin?
That's it for me. Thank you.
I just wanted to, since all the trustees have commented, first of all, I believe the calendar should be done three to five years in advance. I don't know of any university that doesn't do three years. To do it yearly, to me, is just, it's ridiculous. As one student alluded to, she'd like to know what's going to be offered in the future and what dates. Tonight, I really wanted to learn, Mr. Cairo, I wanted to learn from shared governance and have you tell me how winter would promote student success. And I was hoping for a lit review, basically, of major work, saying that a winter session is important to student success, but I didn't hear that tonight. I didn't hear really much evidence why a winter session is good. As Dr. Mann alluded to, and I've been a professor for almost 30 years at the Cal State system, and we basically have... and we basically have eliminated a winter session, we have very few. The faculty do not believe in these concentrated courses in various weeks. And another thing I'm big on is study abroad, and I even tried to get our university to end earlier, which we have now, because it is a big boon for study abroad in the sense that students benefit, they can go cheaper abroad, and it's very important, I believe, for all students to study abroad for at least a semester or a summer. And so, at this point, I think you did a great job, Mr. Martin and Ms. Wa. We will move on to a direction from the trustees, what they would like to do.
You did not want a response, the trustee fellow?
No. No.
Clarification?
I'm sorry, no. You've done your job.
Students did vote for a winter.
Thank you, President Fellow. First of all, I'd like to thank the board, each member of the board, and trustee Thompson, trustee Mann, who have taken the trouble to attend in this way because the issue is so important. And also thank you for modeling for the community, empathetic listening, and I know that you will vote your conscience. I especially wanted to thank the administration for the way that they have been working hard on this issue all along, and have been listening and working with our faculty and staff colleagues collegially, even when, but especially when, we disagree. There is no doubt that there is disagreement here. And ultimately, the decision comes down to a call by, a recommendation by the administration and a call by the board as to what's best for students and who is to be held accountable for that. And finally, say, you've heard all the, you know, the pros and cons, that in a moment, at some moment in the future, not too distant future, I heard a lot of comments about FTS and growth and so on and so forth, and the board budget committee met last night. You will see a very detailed mathematical report in a short moment about the college's budget from 2013-14 and the recommended budget for 2014-15. So, and I think that, not I think, I know that report will show that our enrollment growth was robust this year, was exceptional, those are facts. The revenue growth was exceptional, those are facts. The budget savings was extraordinary, those are facts. Those will be reported in a minute, so I just wanted to make sure that you understood as you weigh this and vote, that you knew that those budget and FTS enrollment growth stats are reported to the public. So, thank you, President Fellow.
Okay, the wishes of the board, you have two recommendations this evening, and we will vote on this after a motion is put forward.
I move that we accept and approve the administration's recommendation on a 2014-2015 academic calendar.
We have a motion from Dr. Mann to accept the administration's calendar, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Martin? Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, I think it's important that the motion, if it could be, would be the adoption of a provisional 2014-2015 academic slash student calendar, to be consistent.
All right, I will, I will accept that.
Is that okay, Mr.?
And I accept that, and I think for clarity for the record, what is, which tab is that behind, I mean, it's all F, but which?
The actual action item is right there, at the front of F, if that's what you're referring to.
Okay, so I've been looking off the...
Trustee Martin, it does refer to the attached provisional 2014-15 calendar, so the page that follows immediately behind it is part of the recommended item.
So I think as the second, and I think, Dr. Mann, it's the provisional 14-15 academic student calendar.
That's correct.
Right, that's correct.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion? Ms. Thompson, will you call the role, please? Yes.
Ms. Brown? Ms. Wa?
Yes.
Dr. Mann?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Dr. Selvage?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
The motion passes six trustees and one absentee this evening. We'll now move on to number G, public hearing and adoption of fiscal year.
Students want winter! 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 Students want winter!
We'll move on to a public hearing and adoption. Do we have any, one who wants to speak on this item this evening?
Mr. Fellow?
Yes, Dr. Mann.
Trustee Fellow, I'm sorry, but I wonder, could we possibly, before we start that item, go to item J on the board policy revision? I'm, I am going to have to leave in about five minutes, because the place where I, the public place where I'm meeting is getting ready to close.
Okay.
And I would, I would like to recommend that we hold these policy items, and look at these only as information tonight, so that we can take them up at the next meeting where we can have a full and appropriate discussion, if that's all right?
That's fine. You don't want to go with the two first policy items this evening?
I want, I want, I want to put all of them as information items. I want to, I want to move all of them over to next week, if that's possible, when I can be present to discuss them.
Okay, thank you, we will.
Okay.
Okay, let's move on to a public hearing on the adoption of fiscal year 2014-15 tentative budget.
Do you want to open the public hearing?
A public hearing is open. The public hearing is closed.
Yes, thank you, President Fellow, and thank you also, trustee Mann. Again, to reiterate, trustee Mann has recommended that all the items in J are here as information items for the public, not for discussion or for vote today, but that these items and perhaps others that trustee Mann prepares will come forward at the next board meeting. So with that, again, I thank you, trustee Mann. Okay, we're on to a very important item, which is G, public hearing and adoption of fiscal year 2014-15 tentative budget. In introducing Dr. Miller and Joe Simoneshi, let me just say that this is an annual ritual. At this time, usually in this meeting of June, we recommend a tentative budget. It's tentative because if the board approves it, votes approves, to approve it...
Oh, I'm believing no.
I'm sorry, being kicked out. If the board votes the approval of the tentative budget tonight, will give the district the authority to spend, continue to spend money on July 1st, and July 1st is an important date, because that's the first date of the new state fiscal year. So that's why it's called tentative, and then as Joe will explain, in September, according to state law, Dr. Miller and executive director Simoneshi will bring back the final board, final budget for board approval. So with that, Dr. Miller and executive director Simoneshi, please.
Thank you. Dr. Rocha, you teed this up perfectly. I just will add very briefly that after our presentation, we will turn this over to trustee Selvage, who chairs the budget and audit committee, and trustee Selvage will speak to what we did last night for over two hours. In addition to that, I would like to draw everybody's attention that behind tab G, and we have copies in the audience on the, on the table for the public to have as well, is the tentative budget, as well as a copy of a PowerPoint presentation, which is a very deep dive. For the purposes of tonight's presentation, in the interest of time, executive director Simoneshi has prepared a brief slide presentation, and verbally he'll speak to some other items, and then we are prepared to answer whatever questions the board may have. Mr. Simoneshi, thank you.
Great. Good evening. If I can just take one moment, I'd like to introduce you to three new people that the, that have joined the district. Our new fiscal team director of fiscal services, Diane Mandrufina. Our new supervisor of budget forecasting and analysis, Laconia Fennessy. Our controller Hedva Weingard actually won tickets to the World Cup games, so she's actually there. And last but not least, George Shidniak, who's our new director of purchasing and contracts administration. So as Dr. Miller mentioned, we did bring about 30 packages tonight of the revised PowerPoint that was put together Monday morning. It is a revision from the PowerPoint that went out on Friday and was posted on Friday, and that is because the P2, or the second principal apportionment report, was posted late Thursday night, and there was very good news. So if you did not receive a copy of the revised PowerPoint, it will, I will check tonight to make sure it is posted to our fiscal services website, if it's not, it will be posted tomorrow morning. But there are two slides that were added to the revised PowerPoint, which the board has received, was in your seat when you first came in, and that is slide two. And that actually speaks to our 2013-2014 credit and non-credit FTS attainment. And our base and restoration that we achieved was 21,341 FTES. Now, at the principal, the first principal apportionment report, if I recall correctly, we were at 18,956, so there is a significant difference between what we had at P1 and what we now have at P2. But we had income from additional base and restoration FTES in the amount of 2.9 million, so I hope that answers the question that was asked earlier. Expense as a result of the additional base and restoration is approximately $1.5 million, and the net gain to the district is approximately $1.4 million. The second slide that was added is titled...
Joe, I'm sorry, and what's important to note about that is that that additional base, and what's known as the restoration, now is added and is ongoing as we go forward. So it was very important that we gain back that FTES, because now it is part of our base going forward, and we will continue to earn that roughly $2.9 million every year going forward, assuming we continue to make our new base.
So just to be clear, what you're saying is that our enrollment went up significantly this year?
Our enrollment went up significantly, as did our income as a result, again, of the good work of our faculty, our staff, our managers, for working hard to achieve the restoration of that, of the FTES.
So the second slide that was added to the revised PowerPoint is titled, and is page three, titled 2014-15 credit and non-credit FTS, FTES goal. So our credit and non-credit base is 21,341, that was achieved in 2013-14, and on top of that, we want to go after 18% of our 2011-2012 workload reduction. So our 2011-2012 restoration FTES is 306, and our 2014-15 restoration growth potential, budgeted at 2%, is an additional 427 FTES. So our goal for 2014-15 is a total of 22,074 FTES. Okay? I'm sorry? No? All right. So we do have one slide, and the slide is meant to be very quick, only because the PowerPoint has been presented and the board's committee for budget audit, the budget audit committee did meet last night, but I do want just to make a few brief comments. So Dr. Rocha is correct, the tentative budget actually authorizes spending to continue on July 1st, 2014, for the start of the new fiscal year. The budget and resource allocation committee has been consulted over several meetings. The information, as well as much more, has been presented with the information contained in the tentative budget. Questions were asked, they were answered, many things came up, we are taking many things into consideration. Because this is a continued process from the tentative budget through the finalization and the refinement of the adopted budget, recommendations from faculty, staff, managers, BRAC, and others will be considered, and as appropriate, will be implemented into the adopted budget, or to the final recommendation for the adopted budget, which will be presented to the board on September 3rd, 2014. As part of our ongoing work related to revenue, we need to consider and build a 2014-15 and beyond budget based on funding of our current and future commitments. Enrollment and growth continues to be a high priority for the district. In fiscal year 2013-14, the district offered 1,022 more sections than it did in fiscal year 2012-13. In fiscal year 2012-13, we provided 5,350 sections, and in fiscal year 2013-14, we offered 6,372, a year-over-year increase of approximately 19%. From a fiscal perspective, the conversation needs to continue related to efficiency of the offerings. This is the best mechanism to ensure additional dollars to the district without adding to our mounting expenses. Academic and Student Affairs is aggressively pursuing a variety of enrollment management strategies, and will make a presentation to the board at its regular business meeting in August. In relationship to expenses, we are targeting the board's goal to have an 85% expense ratio to income, or a compensation expense ratio to income. As a comparison, in fiscal year 2012-13, the district's projected compensation expense to income ratio was 90.22%. The actual percentage after year-end closing was 87.98%. For fiscal year 2013-14, the district projected a 90.75% ratio. At year-end closing and during the final adopted budget presentation in September, we'll provide the actual presented and the projected ratio for fiscal year 2014-15. In fiscal year 2014-15, the district has seen significant cost drivers. Our benefits plan costs increased by an unanticipated $2.4 million. This includes an average 3% increase across all of our policies that the district must now incur as a result of the new Affordable Care Act. In addition, we're seeing a $393,000 increase in employer contributions to the CalSTRS retirement program, and a $77,000 increase in employer contributions to the CalPERZ retirement program. These increases are significant, and will continue to rise over the course of the next seven years. With the information we have now, the district will see at a minimum approximately $11 million in increased employer contributions, employer contribution expenses to fund both retirement programs through fiscal year 2020 through 2021. So with this information, and with this submission, the district respectfully requests that the tentative budget be approved so we can continue to spend for operating expenses and commitments on July 1st.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Selvage?
Did you say you wanted to mention something further? Yes?
No, actually, what we're talking about there, as a result of the board budget and audit committee last night, there were two slight corrections to the PowerPoint. Do you want to mention what those are for Dr. Selvage, please?
We had two questions that came up last night. One was related to a correction on slide seven. We wrote that the benefits increases for one of our policies, the initial rate increase was 27%, however, the amount was negotiated down to 18%. It was a typo last night, it was actually typed in at 17%, but the 18% is corrected. Trustee Martin had a question about the possibility that we were double-counting a $1.9 million revenue, and we double-checked and triple-checked, and we did not. The $1.94 million is related to our rollover into our new fiscal year, and the second $1.9 million is related to the increase in FTS revenue generation. So it was only counted once.
Other than that, the presentation was the same, and again, what we elected to do tonight was to just kind of do a short bullet point based upon the deep discussion we had last night, but now I would ask Dr. Selvage if he would, if he feels like he would like to comment. And Dr. Selvage is the chair of our budget and audit subcommittee for the district.
Thank you. The total general unrestricted funds that we're talking about here for this coming year is $156 million. There's some so-called one-time money in that revenue.
Correct.
Which is coming from, which is essentially making up for money that we might otherwise have received if the state hadn't had such financial difficulties. Inasmuch as that is one-time money, we're being very careful about how we use it. It's not something that we're going to see coming every year. And it was brought out in the audit, that there are several funds that we should consider increasing, to be physically prudent, and where the budget reflects that. This is a pretty big budget. The purpose of the... The purpose of the action tonight is to make it legal for us to write checks beginning on July 1. So the meeting last night was pretty much a presentation. We asked questions. There will be another meeting, at least before the final budget comes to the Board, and I hope to have more questions and understand a few more things when we get to that. In particular, you know, looking at the Project 90 Action Plan, there are a couple of things which have been brought up to me again and again and again, and that is the matter of the number of courses that we're offering. Counseling. Action Item 8 is increasing access to counseling. And Action 14 is adopting access to in-district students, a formal plan there. That would have perhaps some ancillary connection with budgeting, so I hope we'll be able to get into that in some detail at the next committee meeting. A couple of things came up when we went through the audit. As I mentioned, we were informed that there were several funds that we ought to consider increasing, just to be prudent, and we're doing that. But also, a question that I asked yesterday related to the Prop 30 money. We're getting $13 million or something this year, Prop 30 money?
We estimated $13.9 million. Actually, we estimated $13.6 million, which was a carryover dollar amount from fiscal year 2014. And late Thursday night, we were informed it would actually be a little more, which is one of the items in your binder. So for the finalization of the adopted budget, it will be refined.
It's about 15 and change, I recall, at this point.
Okay, that's the ballpark figure that we're talking about. But that money is not going to be here forever.
Correct.
That's something that's going to end. I don't know if it's in five or seven years. The Prop 30 increased sales tax for one period of time, and increased the income tax for a different period of time. I don't know how this is going to work out, but it's going to end. Couple of other items that we need to really think about, not just for this year's budget, but as we're going ahead and looking forward, the state, through CalSTRS and CalPERS, is going to require community colleges and an awful lot of other institutions, public institutions around the state, to start making very substantially larger contributions to the pension funds. In addition to that, it's been mentioned that we've had increases in the cost of the benefit packages, primarily Medicare. And if that wasn't enough, apparently, we're likely, unless we don't understand how it works, we're likely to have to pay a significant—some people have called it an excise tax under the Obamacare programs. This is because of the level of benefits that are offered in our medical plan. So we've got some things that are coming down the pike here. We know about them. We can see them. We don't know exactly how much they're going to be, but we know they're going to be big. We're going to lose Prop 30 money eventually. We're going to have to pay an awful lot more for CalPERS and CalSTRS. We're probably going to have to pay more for medical, and then on top of that, we might have that, what some people have called the excise tax under the Obamacare provisions. College had better look ahead to that and start preparing and understand what kind of impacts those are going to have on the operations. And college is going to have to understand what kind of decisions it's going to have to make in order to deal with that, so that we can continue to write checks that don't bounce. There are a number of things that, you know, were mentioned yesterday. Online instruction, class sizes, other things, you know, growth of the students. But, you know, none of those are going to, by themselves, you know, solve this problem. We're going to have to look ahead and make sure that as we do our budgeting for this year and in the coming years, that we're really responsible and face up to what's coming down the track. You know, I don't think we're just going to have to be able to solve this by growing enrollment or growing faster than other community colleges. I mean, if everybody did that, it wouldn't work. You know, there's a pot out there. We can grow the pot by having different programs and that. But we're really going to have to take a hard look at the programs that we're funding. Last year, when I campaigned, I told thousands of people that I spoke to in mailers and in person that I considered the budget to be the most important document that the Board of Trustees deals with annually. And after all, it's a monstrous statement of policy. It's where the resources are coming from and where the resources are going. And look forward to the next couple of months and having a responsible budget that reflects the goals that the Board of Trustees has set out when we get together in September. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Selvage. That's very well put. Any other comments?
I'd like to make a few comments, but really, Ross made them all, and he said it pretty well. I'm just going to echo it from the committee. So the way I look at this year is, I feel like we were the lucky guy that was chosen to get the one year of total feast, where we get plumped up, and we can eat whatever we want and do whatever we want, because next year, they're throwing us in the volcano to appease the gods. And so that's kind of what I feel like is happening this year. So this year, as Ross articulated, there's about $3 million extra that we're going to get in revenue to support ongoing operations. Just looking at the routine cost of business, it's probably costing us $9 million. So there's, in the budget proposal we see here, there's about another $4 million that's being cut from what I would call the consumable line items, the consultants, the paper, the supplies. It's all the non-personnel things to make up the other half of the $9 million that isn't getting funded on an ongoing basis by the additional revenues. So it's about half and half. Obviously, that doesn't bode well for trying to increase or decrease the personnel percentage, but that's what was in this recommendation, just to put it to us simply. The plumping up that we're getting for the year of the feast is the additional one-time $9 million, most of which is coming from deferred revenues the state has withheld in prior years, and they finally are giving it to us. So it's a one-time, you got it back. As Dr. Selvage mentioned, I believe this is a one-time gift, and especially knowing that the volcano's coming. I think we would be very prudent, especially in fact that the auditors had told us we need to do this, to fully fund our work comp fund and get it up, which would be somewhere, we don't know exactly, $3 to $4 million, and then at least maybe another additional million for our OPEB retirement benefits that we owe our staff. We've been working very hard for many years to get that funding up to where it's supposed to be, and we warbles around whether it's the right number or not. We're pretty close, but we're still, we think, in the last estimate, about a million away. We aren't going to get a gift like this again with one-time money, and so we ought to catch up with all those prior obligations, get the audit finding off our back, and do it while we can, because it ain't going to be possible once they throw us in the volcano. I want to quickly reiterate the volcano that we're looking at, and again, Ross, I think, did a really good job of it. Just this year, our benefit package, especially with the increase in the health benefits and the extra STIRS and PERS, is $3 million. Well, many of the campus staff have accepted a 2% raise for the year, and if everybody accepted the 2% raise, the 2% raise is $2 million. So in essence, the $3 million that is required to be paid into these benefits is like a 3% on top of everything else we've negotiated, just because we're paying full family, full benefits, full across the board. But next year, it gets worse. Where this year went up half a million dollars for the STIRS-PERS, next year, it's going to go up an additional $1,005,000. And so on top of that, the Affordable Care Act has been estimated to cost an additional 3% to 4% more next year. And because we do have a very nice health and benefit plan that just went up $3 million, we probably will get assessed an additional penalty, commonly referred to, you had a nice name for it, the excise tax. We less sophisticated people call it the Cadillac tax. And that's all waiting for us as we're falling down into the flames of the deep volcano.
And that's $3.1 million.
Yeah, just the Cadillac tax. So, you know, to put this in perspective, we've been at the negotiating table. Many of the groups have accepted multi-year deals, and they're getting their 2%, and we're trying to settle with everybody. But on top of that, we've got another 3% that's going out to everybody just through these benefits, and starting next year, it's going to look like 6%, 7%, 8%. That's a volcano. To me, that's a volcano. So I agree with Dr. Selvage. It was a great report by both of the team. They really looped us in very, very well. But it's really clear to me, we need to make a priority of funding these obligations the auditors have pointed out to us, and get that done while we can with one-time money, and then brace ourselves and work together to see if there's any way to not go up any sharp hills that have volcanic substances on them as we're walking up. So that's my recommendation.
Thank you. I think you both did a great job. I was thinking, I wish you were both in the state legislature, because when they get a surplus, they do a social program, mandate it, and then they tax the people to death to cover it. So I think you're absolutely right that we have to be careful with that. Do you want to make a recommendation? Dr. Selvage?
Oh, right. Recommend that we adopt the tentative budget for 2014-15.
Can I move? We have a motion from Dr. Selvage, and a second from Ms. Wa. Any further discussion? Ms. Thompson?
Fellow?
Yes.
Ms. Brown? Ms. Wa?
Yes.
Dr. Mann?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Dr. Selvage?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
It's six affirmative and one absent this evening. Okay, thank you very much. We're going to move on to Action Item H, certification of signatures. This is just a formality, and I'll accept a motion to approve. So move?
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Martin, a second from Ms. Wa. Further discussion? Ms. Thompson?
Dr. Fellow?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Wa?
Yes.
Dr. Mann?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Dr. Selvage?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Dr. Mann?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Dr. Selvage?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, we have six affirmative and one absent this evening. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to adoption of the education protection account funding and expenditures. Dr. Rocha?
Yes, Item I, this is an item for what's known as EPA funds proceeds, but there are no fiscal implications. The EPA funds that are listed in your Item I are not additional funds, but rather components of the district's 2014-15 revenue from the state. So the administration is putting that forward to you. It's a requirement. We need to do it anyway, but we're putting it forward to the Board for approval.
Okay, wishes of the trustees.
What, do you need a motion to approve? Then I will move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Martin, a second from Ms. Wa. Further discussion? Ms. Thompson?
Dr. Fellow?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Wa?
Yes.
Dr. Mann?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Dr. Selvage?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
We have six affirmative and one absent. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to Item K, the Board Self-Assessment by Law 1490.
Yes, this was an item that Trustee Mann had brought forward. The Board needs to do a self-assessment, and I think Trustee Mann has requested that the deadline for that assessment be extended. Trustee Mann, was there a specific, let's see—
Yes. Excuse me, let me get my glasses on. And for the record, I'd like to report that I moved from the Starbucks to the Carl's Jr. parking lot. If you hear a big truck go by, you'll know where I am.
Definitely taking one for the team.
Taking one for the team. The trustees are to have completed their self-evaluation by the last regular meeting in June, unless the Board by majority votes acts to extend this deadline. I would like to move that we extend this deadline to—I think we're only going to— I'm taking this tight.
I didn't hear the last part.
Can you repeat that?
What was, Trustee Mann, what was the extension date that we're requesting? From June to—
I think her cellphone may have—
Got mugged.
I'm afraid not. Well, she's coming back. If you look at by law—
I'm sorry. Do you need to know who Kim Wardlow is?
What was the extension date that we needed on that?
Something bizarre just happened to my phone. Okay, extension would be to the first meeting date in August, and I'm not sure what that date is.
Okay, that's it. So that change is 1490.4. It says that usually it's supposed to be done by the last meeting in June, and what Trustee Mann is recommending, that the Board extend that to the first meeting in August.
And we have a motion from Trustee Mann. Do we have a second? We have a second from Ms. Wa. Further discussion? Ms. Thompson?
Dr. Fellow?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Ms. Wa? Yes, and I do have a comment after.
Dr. Mann?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Dr. Selvage?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
We have six affirmative and one absent. Ms. Wa?
Yes, I believe that the Board had approved in a prior meeting that we go for an RFP for a consultant to help us on the self-assessment. Is that correct? So if that's correct, if my memory serves me right, then I hope—I don't know how many of those responses we've received, but I would like to see a list of the proposers who have—the pool of proposers, and then—so that we can evaluate who we want to select.
Yes, I think you're correct. Thank you. We'll now move on to information items.
Yes, thank you, President Fellow. I'll be brief with Item L, which is my report. Actually, my report this year, at this time, is my usual year-end summary that is, reports progress against the Board-approved goals. They're in your public agenda and for the public to see. But I did want to first, first of all, thank all of the faculty and all of the staff and all of my colleagues in the administration for their work during this past year that has produced these extraordinary results. I did want to underline, for the record, just two or three things. First of all, it's budget night, and I wanted to thank everyone is responsible for the fact that for the fourth consecutive year, the college has exceeded its FTS revenue goal and budget reserve goals. And this is actually part—we would not have hit our FTS target this year had we not added Rosemead and the online college, Weekend and Online College. So I appreciate the collaboration with all faculty and staff on that. We're hitting our goals. Once again, we were over our projected revenue and under our projected expenses. And so that is extraordinary performance I wanted to thank all of you for. The most important thing, of course, is not money, but students. And the Item 3, which is student success, which is graduation. Graduation, the award of a diploma, which the Board awards, is the most visible tangible symbol of student success. And in my report, it says the total associate degrees were up 17% this year, year-over-year, from 1645 to 1920. Total awards, including CTE, were up 10% to 2,509 total awards, making the class of 2014 the largest in PCC history. Almost every faculty and staff member and administrator, their work is found in my report. And I think it's excellent record, and I thank all of you from the bottom of my heart. That's my report, President.
Thank you very much. Now we'll turn to—
President Fellow, we had a request from Simon Fraser. I don't know if he's here to comment on this. Okay, I think he left.
2014 the largest in PCC history. Almost every faculty and staff member and administrator, their work is found in my report, and I think it's excellent record, and I thank all of you from the bottom of my heart. That's my report, President.
Thank you very much. Now we'll turn to--
President Fellow, we had a request from Simon Fraser, I don't know if he's here, to comment on this. Oh, okay, did you call him?
I think he left. Thank you, Ms. Wa. And we'll turn to shared governance, and Dr. Mann, do you have something this evening?
No, the only thing that we had was, I wasn't quite sure with the Board Self-Assessment. I'm sorry, my phone's going in and out, and I didn't quite understand what Trustee Wa was saying. I don't think the Board had ever discussed having a consultant help us with our assessment. And I think it's really important that by the meeting in July, that the assessment instruments have been reviewed, so that it can be given to the trustees to complete, so we can have it done in August. And I would suggest that the President appoint a subcommittee, I don't think we have a standing committee, or maybe do it himself, or the officers, to look at the instruments and distribute it, so that it will be registered in July. Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Mr. Thompson?
No comments.
Ms. Wa, comment?
Shared governance?
Trustee--
Trustee and Assistant. Yeah, just generally, let's see, we also, at the Triple CT, we also discussed the budget, and the Chancellor gave a report on the online, and there was a webcast a couple of days ago, so I thought the results were a little surprising, they didn't really show that there was great success with online, but they actually recommended that we push forward on it, so I don't know what the outcome of the webcast was. But the other thing that they acknowledged was the emphasis and the money and the grants that were going for CTE and the pathways, and called out those colleges that have received the special grants. I wanted to thank Dean Davila, because I guess we're among those 15 million in the consortium. And, let's see, oh, and I wanted to announce that both Trustee Simon Fraser and I completed our certificate, an effective trustee certificates, so that just requires that, but I think it goes towards our accreditation, that we have gone through this process and made sure that we got trained in those accredited areas, and that I am now the new LA County Schools Trustee Association President. So hopefully, through that role, I can help bring K-12s and community colleges together on roles, so we're all looking forward to working together on that.
Congratulations. Mr. Martin?
Nothing to announce, except for Laxda is so overwhelmingly K-12, that for you to be elected president is really something. So, wow.
Thank you. Dr. Salvage?
Is it correct that we deferred the discussion of the policy, Board Policy--
To the next meeting, yes.
One of the things there that jumped out at me was the description of the number of meetings that we hold, and it doesn't, I don't know that it's consistent with what we have scheduled here, but anyway, something we need to make sure we get consistent.
Talk to Dr. Mann, thank you. Shared governance now, we'll turn to Jordan Orozco.
So nothing too big to report from AS as of right now. Summer is a really low time for us, and right now, I'm training my Board, as well as the interim advisors, to get ready for next year, we're really anticipating it. Some of the things we're talking about are working together with institutional effectiveness to create more streams of data from students, so like using LancerPoint to do, to implement surveys that get students' feedback quicker, so that way we have more data, which we can make better informed decisions on. The second thing that we're also working on, too, is building a cohesive Board together with similar goals, so that way you guys can, we have an annual report of what we worked on, and then how effective and educational our program is in associated students as a leadership opportunity. Other than that, that's pretty much it, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Altamirano, Classified Senate?
Bring this down a little. Thank you, I'll make this really brief--
There must not be a World Cup game tonight.
Tomorrow, 9:00 AM. I just want to say a quick year interview for us, again, it's been a very eventful, it's my first year serving on the Senate, and although I've been, obviously, I've been a classified Senator for a number of years, it was really a difference actually being involved with the Senate. And with that, we, one of the things we did, we had a lot of professional learning activities, we had a welcome day for classified staff, our actual professional learning day on the same day as the Faculty Professional Learning Day. We had one of the best classified days at Huntington Library this year, we have a lot of classified staff, say, some that have been here for many years, saying it was the best one they've ever attended. And we awarded two scholarships, one a student, one a staff, and one of our, also, one of our Board members actually received that, so that was a good honor. We're looking forward to an upcoming fiscal year, that's again with the new Boards. We're having elections as we speak, so it's going to be, you might see somebody new next month. But I did like to finish, although she's not here anymore, Chiro Robinson, who's our President, is actually, her last day is Monday, she'll be retiring, so I just wanted to thank her for her service for Classified Senate President for the past year. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the good job you've done. Mr. Chiro, Academic Senate?
Thank you. Two key points that during the last Academic Senate, one is that the Academic Senate voted to have another meeting come in July. Normally, we don't, but we intend to have another meeting, and we began discussions on having a vote of no confidence on the Board of Trustees and the administration, and based on what I saw tonight in terms of the vote, is that I will recommend that a Senate move forward in the vote of no confidence for both the administration and the Board of Trustees. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Douglas, Management Association?
Thank you, President Fellow. Not really much of a report, but I just want to say we had elections to the Management Association Board today, and we'll have two, three new members coming on, replacing the two retiring members, and I'd just like to acknowledge their good work for the Association, and that's Dean Elmer and Director Coleross, so we're going to really miss them. And don't ask why it takes three people to replace the two of them, but thank you.
Thank you. And the next meeting we have in front of you will be July 16th, and Ms. Brown will be conducting that meeting. Any proposed future agenda items? If not, I'd like this evening to adjourn in memory of former Almonte City Councilwoman and School Board Member, Emily Ashagaki, who was very active in the community and died two weeks ago. This meeting is adjourned.